Are you good? Are we recording? Okay, good. I'd like to welcome everybody to our September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Commissioners Meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that a public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS two-four-one point oh one-five-three V-two. I'll call this meeting to order. Mike, would you leave some pledge?
My pledge was to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve P M. to one fifteen P M. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and any item may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Kathy? Okay, J R?
Yeah, we had a public lands board meeting the other night. And I'm not sure what's gonna happen with Patsy being out. But the NACO conference, we need to get on the agenda to maybe advocate for us on our state of emergency on the wild horses. Maybe they'll lobby for us or something.
Okay, anything else?
I don't know if anybody's going to it or not in here. Bill, you going, aren't you?
Um, I am, if I can, yes. I miss a piece of the NACO possibly. We've got some court at the moment. We're trying to maneuver things around. But that was only the first day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike?
Uh, at the hospital board last night, um, a couple of things that were discussed is there was a family trust money given to the hospital for a new ultrasound machine, mammography machine, and a C T machine once the construction's done. So, patient's working with that. Uh, one thing to get out is the health fair is September twenty-third from seven to eleven at Civic Center. Um, currently, there's twenty-eight entities that are all gonna be there to provide services or that. That was about it.
Good. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. Um, feel like it's been a while. I missed the last meeting, so. Um, we did attend a few different conferences, and I'm, one of the things I'm excited about is where you have some more continuing partnerships in the community that are, that are growing. So hopefully, we will be able to assist the school. They got a grant for seventy thousand dollars to do some improvements around the duck pond. So, um, we had a meeting with them yesterday, and hopefully, we will assist them in kind of digging that out and continuing a walking path around it, including going to the job fair. Well, the county will have a booth there and hopefully have some of these kids start doing some volunteer work here in some of the, some of the offices and at the road and bridge and waterings who are in places like that where they can get a feel for what kind of jobs we do here at the county. In the past, we had, uh, summer temps, and a lot of the summer temps would turn into full-time employees. Um, some didn't, but, uh, some have. So, that's, that was successful for us in the past, but we're looking forward to some of them moving forward. And then, our EMS, we'll be giving you guys an update at the next meeting on that, but we do have some, some positive things moving forward there. Uh, Mike Harris is doing a great job and, uh, and working on some things that I think are pretty exciting. So, bringing them back to the community and letting the Commission know as well. And then, there's a sponsorship, uh, the Longhorns are doing now because of some of their other sponsors have, have started fading out after COVID and, um, people just not being able to put as much forward. So they do have sponsorships for the sports programs to help kind of buy jackets, pay for motel rooms overnight, things like that. So I would like to know if the Commission would like to put that back on. I know that we put a small amount of money aside for, um, asks or grants that would come to us after, um, the budget. So, that's one of the things that came up in our meeting. I said I'd bring back to you guys if you guys are willing to have that as an agenda item. And then, the other thing that I would like to, um, bring back to you guys and see if you guys want to consider is if we can build both buildings at the rec center and at the Frontier Community Action Agency off of that one budget. We believe we can build them both. Um, the, there's some, some other concerns that I have that were brought to us on, uh, what is and what isn't being done, uh, at the Frontier Community Action Agency as far as, uh, services that used to be provided here in our community that are no longer being provided. And I, I would like to get with them and, and maybe even have them come present and let us know what their plan is for continuing to provide them services or how they're gonna fill in for the services they aren't providing, um, before we spend a lot of money over there. But I do think that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand could build both buildings and, uh, and make it, make it good on both sides. But that's something that for the Commission to consider as an agenda item next. Um, and then, two more things. Uh, we're looking at the property across the street from the courthouse to see if we can't get a value on that to build maybe a fire hall on it. And also, we've, uh, extended a proposal to the, uh, group that is building around the courthouse that owns the property here on the other side of the courthouse and seeing if we can't just make some sort of trade-off for some of the improvements we would have to do to our lift station out front for the property over here on the left side of the courthouse. It'd be a straight across cut, kind of behind the courthouse where this property ties in to the property line up above, which is, uh, Sheep Creek Road, I believe. So, all of this obviously comes back before you guys for your approval. None of these deals are made without the Commission's approval, but I want you to be aware of some of the, some of the things that we're speaking of. And that's all I have to report.
Right. Thank you, Bert. Okay, we'll move into public comment for nine agenda items only. Is there a public comment?
For the record, my name is Wayne Nebiker. I attended the recent debate with, uh, Ira Hanson and Mr. Scott Beckstead in Elko, and it was disappointing, to say the least. I was really looking forward to hearing some positive argument and some factual statements coming from the, from Mr. Beckstead, and unfortunately, uh, he had no facts. There was nothing, nothing that he brought up that was factual. He, you know, he brought up the wild horses that the Native Americans have been riding for five thousand seven hundred years in America, and that there's no DNA trails, no physical records in the fossil record that backs up any of his statements. And Mr. Hanson was, was definitely a bright spot. He came up with facts, figures, and used good, clean American science. And it was all very factual and, and well, well-defined. And he had pictures and everything and, and, and there was just no fact from the opponent, which was disappointing to me. And Mr. Hanson, uh, he did ask me a few questions, and the questions were is where do we go from here? Where do the seven counties that declared a state of emergency go from here? We have seven counties. We have seven county sheriffs. And, uh, we need to stay on top of this, and we need to get a plan. And we need to, the iron is hot right now, and we cannot afford to quit. You know, to, and if we wanna, one startling fact that came out in this meeting was the Virginia Range Herd Management Area. And that's down around Mustang from I eighty south to U S fifty. And from, uh, you know, from basically the cutoff to go down to Silver Springs, you know, uh, to Sparks. And, uh, they had a, a figure of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-six head of horses in the end of last year. Okay, that's a herd management area that can, can gracefully handle six hundred head. Okay, it's managed by the Nevada Department of Agriculture and the American Wild Horse Campaign. They have a joint mem, joint control on that and, and manage it to their, to their liking. And out of those four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six horses, a hundred and forty-five of them was removed sometime this year. Four hundred and fif, four hundred and seventeen are unaccounted for, and one thousand six hundred and sixty-three died. That's management? That's, that's the, that's the side of the, of the plate that they're coming from? I mean, wrap your mind around one thousand six hundred and sixty-three dead horses. Is that humane? I mean, how long does it take a horse to starve to death or die of dehydration? Just, you know, just put that in perspective and wrap your minds around it. You know, but going forward, uh, the Lander County Pluag Board kind of started this whole ball rolling. And, uh, you know, I thought it felt it was very important that members of the Pluag Board attended that meeting, you know, and that did happen. But on the other side of the coin, you know, we're a volunteer group, and all we can do is advise you, but, but we need to step forward. All these seven counties need to get together, and we need to move forward and get something done. Because if we don't, we're gonna lose our window of opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Sparks?
Yes?
At nine fifteen, we have the public hearing that we have to.
Left you. Is there any more public comment? Okay. So I think we'll just, uh, wait two and a half minutes here, and then we'll get back to our consent agenda, and we'll have our public hearing.
Since they're both at nine fifteen, they open at the same time?
He can always open at two thirty, same time.
Doug, you understand that you're particular to.
Yeah.
We should probably do it at the same time.
Wait, nine fifteen, one connected with them.
What you doing, if you doing back-to-back, you're fine.
It's like, or, you know, a lot of people are sitting below at nine, and I'll go at nine. Got you.
So it'll be items three, four, five?
Just three and four.
Just three and four?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, and I believe that we open them, uh, if, if you want to read them both at the same time. This is the first time we've ever stacked the public hearings at the exact same time, but it's how both of our neighboring counties do that, so we're.
So we'll just open them both at the same time?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, we'll move into our public hearing scheduled for nine fifteen. Uh, we'll have items three and four. I'm gonna read them both into the record, and we'll open them, and we can have a discussion if needed. Commissioners, review, consideration, and possible action on order of street vacating and abandonment. With regards to abandonment, application number twenty-three dash oh two filed by Bottom Mountain General Hospital to vacate a nine-point-five-foot-by-five-hundred-and-thirty-one-point-seven-foot portion of the West Humboldt Street right-of-way adjacent to A P N zero-zero-two-dash-one-two-three-dash-zero-four and zero-zero-two-dash-one-two-three-dash-zero-three. This was approved by the Planning Commission on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following conditions. One, Lander County receives responses from all public utility or video service providers per NRS two-seven-eight-point-four-eight-zero-point-six prior to recordation of abandonment of roads, streets, and easements. And two, a public utility and access easement is to be located over the area to be abandoned. Item four, review, consideration, and possible action on order of street vacating and abandonment with regards to abandonment, application number two-three-dash-oh-three filed by Crescent Valley Solar Energy, L L C, to abandon a portion of Lander County Road one-zero-six F zero-eight that runs through A P N zero-zero-seven-dash-two-five-oh-dash-four-three. This was approved by the Plan, Planning Commission on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following conditions. One, Lander County receives responses from all public utility and video services, service providers per NRS two-seven-eight-point-four-eight-zero-point-six prior to recordation of abandonment of roads, streets, and easements. Okay, so we'll take item three.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you. Shelby, not for the record. Uh, so, uh, item number three regarding the vacation for the Bottom Mountain General Hospital. Um, there was kind of something missed in their building plans. Their awning, uh, footings were a little bit out in the right-of-way, so they came to us. Uh, we decided, uh, that vacating the area would be the best way to go forward, just so their infrastructure wasn't in the right-of-way. Um, so that's kind of what this is. Uh, like the item says, the Planning Commission approved it at their meeting with those two conditions. Um, I believe Jason is here if he has any comments to add.
I'll try to answer any questions if there are any. Um, I'll come up there. Um, part of this project, Jason Blake, for the record. The awning is out on the emergency room entrance, um, out on the John Peters Health Service Building side of the facility. And, uh, in the past, it's been kind of a hairy situation, or it's been reported to me quite often. It's a hairy situation for the ambulance to kind of creep up around a corner into a fairly narrow driveway. Um, in this construction process, we've tried to expand that a little bit to make it a little bit less hairy, less cumbersome, uh, to give ambulance, um, drivers and even the attendants a little bit more room and the nurses more room to maneuver around through there. And, uh, we went through all the approval processes with the state, with the county, and then when we got, I guess it got down to the nuts and bolts of it, we found that it was sticking into that right-of-way a few feet. And so, we've just requested this abandonment. We have a commitment to, uh, put in curb and gutter along that side and to maintain it through the future. Um, and with it, with that, I'll open for questions.
Any questions from the Commission? Do we have any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Jason. If there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The order of the street for vacating and abandonment. Do I have to read that whole thing all over again? In the, in the, in my motion?
You can just ask. Ask.
Okay, so we'll make a motion as, as permitted.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, good. We'll go to item four.
Um, I believe we have Brianna from Crescent Valley Solar Energy. She might be on the phone. Um, but this one, uh, they are proposing a solar farm out by Crescent Valley, and there is a county road, uh, that runs right through the middle of their parcel. Uh, we had Donnie go out there and check it out. It's, yeah, it's not maintained, and it doesn't look like anybody's used it in a really long time. So, uh, Donnie agreed that we can go ahead and vacate that. Um, the Planning Commission approved it at their meeting, uh, with the condition listed.
My, my question for you, Donnie, would be, um, so you went out physically looked at this?
Yes.
So does that road, by banning it, does it block access to any other thing? Do they plan on putting an alternate road around to where they can, public can't access grounds that there would no longer?
There should be an easement around the property. I just prefer roadways. Usually, there is on properties. Um, this road's been there ever since I was kid, was kids. I've never saw anybody drive it. It's never maintained as far as I know, so. And there's some weird structures out there that's been there for years. I don't know what they are, so.
Well, like I say, that would be my main thing. It's like, I mean, even if it's not used frequently, that we, we're giving up a road and that we would limit access to.
Right. No, there should be access around the property, so.
Okay.
There should be. Is there, there, I think there is. I thought we looked at.
I just, I can't tell from the maps exactly what we're looking at.
Um, so, from the G I S view, all the parcels around it have access from other roads. Um, but the applicant, I'm not sure if they're on the phone, but I, when I talked to her, they did agree if they needed to that they could, um, provide a road around the parcel if they need to.
Yeah, but even this road that's out there, it's has washouts, and it's never been touched as far as I know.
Okay.
I would suggest that you, um, just include in your motion, when you, when you abandon it, I would include, subject to a, uh, an easement, either existing or being granted, um, to go around the project.
We're at, Donnie, we're at out there, is it, is it exactly?
Um, you know where you go up Indian Creek, uh, the backside hilltop?
Yes.
As you turn off Crescent Valley Highway, it's the, it'd be right on your right-hand side as you're heading up to Canyon. And there's that road that runs all, it, I don't know how far it runs back into Crescent Valley.
Okay.
So, but it's right off the highway.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Donnie.
Yep.
Um, does the Commission have any question? Public, is there any? Yes. Morning, Jay.
Good morning. Jane Wintle, for the record. Give you a little history on that road. That road is the county road that used to run from Crescent Valley to Tenavo to Gold Acres before they built the state highway. And my concern is, I don't believe there's access other than Indian Creek on that end. There's two more gates from the state highway. One of them was fenced off where that blue mill and where that equipment place is. I don't know if that has legal access getting back to that road or not. It's fenced off. Now you can't get to it. The access between Indian Creek and it is a little goat trail that I don't believe is legal access. And the other only access is getting on it, turned bound by the Crescent Valley where it goes into the substation. That road is, I've been on it several times in the last year. It's the only access you've got coming over from this side going up over the top, over, come over into Slaven, up into the park and all that. It feeds, that road's the only way you can get from, if you block access to it, you're blocking legal access that they gotta go back to Crescent Valley and come back.
So let me ask you this, since you're so familiar with it, so, 'cause that's my concern, is blocking access, access into grounds that we've had access to. So, if we make it a condition that they grant this access in there, is that, is that a doable thing in the country?
Yeah, I think if they plow a road, I mean, it ain't much road. I think if they go there around their property line and plow a road and not, not fence it around the road or come, or, I mean, they get all the other property. They go back to the state highway and permit one, would be better to, you know, permit one up to that road on the other side they don't want to deal with. I mean, there's several solutions. Like I say, it's just, I don't know if we want to block legal access if people start fencing off private property while you have access to it. We don't want that, 'cause, I mean, it is a feeder road that goes over the top. It's the only way to get from Indian Creek. Like I say, 'cause the road originally was the, I mean, it was probably abandoned in the sixties when the state highway was built. It was used pretty heavy by that little blue mill when they was mining on. Wayne Morris was mining gold out below. Cor, Carl is there when he was mining that free gold. He used it for a haul road. Bill Wilson kept, maintained it through the seventies and eighties, 'cause he didn't license his truck. He held his equipment when he was doing that reclamation work. It was good shape. When I left out there in the eighties, it was a well-maintained road, but it was privately maintained. It wasn't maintained by the county.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Jay, for this. I appreciate that. Uh, is there any other public, uh, comment or? Okay, so just, I guess when we're making the, the, uh, motion, if everybody agrees, is that just make sure that we stipulate that they have to.
Make access.
Make access around. Right, exactly. So if there's no more, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve, as presented, with the stipulation that access around the property be provided by Crescent Valley Solar Energy, so that land might be accept, have access properly.
Okay, perfect. Is there a second? Should we make that a road easement access instead of just access, so they? Okay, yes. I don't, I don't know. Maybe legal could.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that you need to save the word easement in there.
So a road easement access, road easement.
Tell you what, make it as presented, subject to a legal easement around the project on the, their property. And all you have to now say is, so moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. You second it? Okay, good. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
So we're gonna go back to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda notice. Two, approval of August tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Three, approval of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. And four, approval of payroll change requests.
I'll make a motion that we do one, two, three, and four.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into item one, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. And we need to pull check two-two-one-zero-three-seven. Are there any other checks that need to be pulled? Okay?
I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the rest of the bill.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve check two-two-one-zero-three-seven.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain. This made to my employer. Okay, we'll move into item two, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the proposed comments on the Robertson Mines Project.
And I will stay for the discussion on this with my employer.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for the record. And I'd like to thank the Commissioners of Lander County for allowing me to serve for you on this cooperating agency, format that we've gone into for Robertson proposal. I put together some comments for your consideration during the scoping period for this project. So, we entered into the cooperating agency part earlier on, and now, as of August eighteenth, the project has gone to the notice of intent phase, so now it's up for the public to take a look at the project. And the comments that I put together for Lander County are basically just briefly iterating the comments that we provided during the cooperating agency part. Those will be on record. Our comments went in a little late, so they won't be addressed by the B L M until, looks like the date they're hoping is October twenty-eighth or October twenty-seventh, that we'll get to see what their response is to what we sent in. And that will be ahead of them providing a draft E I S to the public. So we'll get another chance bite at the apple if, if we like what they've, uh, come up with in, in response to our comments. So far, it's looked really good. I mean, I've been sitting in on those cooperating agency meetings for you guys. And, uh, and as you know, we had a, a special meeting with all interested parties in May, where we went through some of our concerns, and they expressed at that time how they were gonna address those. So, I think it's looking good for the county so far, but it'll be really nice to see what they put together on October twenty-seventh. Um, so if you have any questions about this, uh, on October twenty-seventh. Um, so if you have any questions about this, uh, this, uh, letter I put together for you, I summarized it for one, two, three on the, the end of it, cause it's, we've already gone through a lot of detail.
Do you have a, you have copies of that? Cause I, I don't have a, I don't have copies.
Yeah, no, you guys should have been provided copies of that. That's, uh, it should, it has my name on it. It's on my letterhead because it has to be submitted by me, but you guys should have that.
The only thing I have is, uh, for.
We will get you copies right now.
Before the meeting, that'll be awesome.
Here, I'll just submit it in a couple of days. So I could read it really fast if you want.
Yeah, please, would you?
Okay, I'll do that. Well, let's see how my reading skills are out loud. This is Ben Alaw. Okay, it's, it's, uh, addressed to Mr. Gilstaff. He's the project manager at the BLM. And here's how it goes. It's pretty short. Lander County appreciates the opportunity to serve as a cooperating agency in the pre-scoping development of the NECA process for the Robertson Mine Project. As you are aware, our comments were formulated later in the process, and we look forward to seeing BLM's response around October twenty-seventh, according to the schedule. The main thrust of the county's comments was about impacts to the perennial stream Indian Creek, groundwater, and impacts to county property owners' enjoyment of their property near the proposal. Lander County will closely follow this area of concern and others. As you are aware, the purpose of the scoping process is to gather concerns and questions that the public has about the project. Lander County believes providing greater detail, such as the draft plan of operations, to the public at this point in the process would allow for more meaningful input. Given the lack of detail provided, the quality of comments received is expected to be underprivileged. The county offers a high-level comment to the DEIS, that's the Draft Environmental Impact Statement, should include a hard look at the mitigation measure, measures offered because of the proposed project. Mitigation measures can be argued to have longer-lived impacts than the nine-year project itself when assessing Robertson project. Past mitigations completed in BLM's EIS for the Deep South Expansion Project are now open again to public scrutiny when applied to the Robertson project, and as such, should be presented in their entirety as a new action. The DEIS that is being considered for the Robertson project should contain all mitigation measures and associated cumulative impacts and other NECA concerns for each measure. The achievability of each of these scenarios with associated impacts to people and wildlife should be thoroughly analyzed and available to the public to see. Arguments have been made that BLM does not have to provide a hard look at mitigation measures because these actions are not part of the action for which the NECA process was initiated. Lander County strongly disagrees with this logic and requests the CEQ, that's the Council on Environmental Quality. Assessment of this position, if BLM takes a stance, mitigation measures contemplated in the DEIS would not take place without the relevant action of approving the Robertson Mine Plan of Operations. If the Plan of Operations precipitates mitigation measures as a direct effect to the project, it is only logical that the mitigation measures are directly tied to the project, and therefore NECA analysis applies. And BLM is required to perform this hard look as an integral component of this EIS. That was a mouthful, I know. Uh, so I said in summary, Lander County will assess BLM's a set response to our comments provided during the cooperating agency phase. Two, the scoping phase should be improved by providing the public with more detail to comment on. And three, the mitigation measures, if proposed, are an integral part of the project and are subject to full NECA evaluation. Lander County will continue to work for our residents and property owners to protect their property rights and preserve the quality wildlife habitat, habitat that the Indian Creek watershed provides. That's a, that was a lot said. We're just asking for a hard look at mitigation measures and they'll make a decision on what's gonna happen. But I think it was good to see this during scoping because that's a big issue. It really is. And I don't know when it'll come on it, but it's nice, I think, for us to just point that out. Now, I pointed that out with my job at Trout Unlimited on the Gold Rush Project, which we haven't seen the final, uh, rod come down on for the final EIS. So they might already answer it by then and we'll know, but it's not out there yet. So I thought I'd put it in, so if you guys consider those scoping comments, I think they frame what we talked about earlier, we have that special meeting on. And I kinda went through the timeline so far, but I'll give you the, the very end part cause this is a long process. We're just in scoping. They're gonna come out with a response to our comments and the public's input. I said, I hope October twenty-seventh, but it's a, the timeline changes depending on how much work they need to do. And then we're not gonna see a, a draft EIS for the public to look at until early twenty twenty-four. So there's a lag there that they'll be working on stuff. And along with that, and I'm glad for this, along with the draft EIS, they will provide the draft, uh, uh, Plan of Operations. And that gives everybody some meat to look at what's really being proposed and stuff. And then finally, if this comes to fruition, it's gonna be near the end of twenty twenty-four is what they're planning on for a recorded decision on the project. So yeah, any questions you have?
Thank you.
Of course.
I have no questions. Anybody have a question?
No.
Um, I thank you for your help and work on the matter.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah. So we've heard the proposed, uh, comments. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion that we, um, approve the, those comments on the Robertson Mine Project.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
I have some public comments.
Oh, yes.
We've got time right now on this.
Yep.
I have one copy. I got a letter here I submitted to the Bureau of Land Management, spokesman, if we can go on the record with it.
Okay, thank you.
You can read it into the record. Just kind of over my concerns.
Would you like me to read it, Jay?
Yeah, you can read it into the record right here.
Okay, so this is addressed to the Bureau of Land Management, Battle Mountain District, Mountain Lewis Field Office regarding Robertson Mine Project File three-eight-oh-nine NVB zero-one-hundred, NVN-dash-one-zero-zero-one-three-seven, DOI-dashBLM dot NV, BO-one-hundred-dash-two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight-dashEIS. This letter is addressing my concern that, concerns in that I operate Blue Ridge Mining Claims under a Plan of Operation regarding Blue Ridge Mine File NVN-dash-zero-six-six-four-eight-three. The Blue Ridge Mining Claim Block is situated between Robertson Mine Project and the Pipeline Mill Complex. My concerns are that they maintain an unrestricted access for my ongoing mine operation from State Highway three-oh-six to the claim block. My other concern is that I own property in Lander County APN number zero-zero-seven-dash-three-five-oh-dash-zero-one and zero-zero-seven-dash-two-five-oh-dash-four-zero, totaling four-hundred-and-fifty-two acres with surface water rights from Indian Creek Proof Number nine-zero-four-zero. File in the office, file in the office, Nevada State Water Engineers Office. The property is located one mile north of the Robertson's Mine Project. My concern is that I'm not aware of any historical data being collated at my diversion dam establishing, showing historic water flows. I contacted Nevada Gold Mines late May with my concern and still waiting on a reply. Thanks, Jay Wintle. Anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think I kinda, I put together a letter kinda quick last night. I generated it off. I didn't know if that part was, like that. I mean, my main concern is water rights and the access cause mines seem like they like to invents.
Right.
People off of public property for the purpose of saying they're keeping them out of their mine, active mining area where they expand out. I mean, they stop all access. I mean, you know, keep you off of public prop, public property is public property. It's not the mines. It has several uses.
Right, understood. Well, thank you for your comment, Jay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, do you guys want that for? Okay. All right, so.
Uh, Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Is there any chance we can move item thirteen up? I think that the school is waiting. Maybe the kids get back in school.
Yes. You guys are wanting to get back into school? I didn't think so. So we'll, uh, we'll jump to item thirteen. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the temporary road closure for the high school homecoming parade starting on Forest Avenue, turning left on Front Street, left on Broad Street, left on Eighth Street, right on Altonburg Avenue, ending at the Battle Mountain High School. The parade will take place on October sixth, twenty twenty-three at twelve P M.
Push the button up there, please. Just like that.
Give us your names for the record.
Hello, I'm Hadi Amesquit, and I am part of, and I'm the student body vice president at the Battle Mountain High School, and we are, they're the parade committee. And this is Galley Benavides and Julian Sosa. And we would just like to approve that we could have the road temporarily closed for the parade that will take place on October sixth at noon.
Okay. Well, thank you. Let's see. And this already all been signed off by all the agencies that need to be signed off.
The DOT.
Yeah, okay. Right. Is there any questions? Public have any questions? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion if we approve the temporary road closure for the high school homecoming parade starting on Forest Avenue, turning left on Front Street, left on Broad Street, left on Eighth Street, right on Attenbury Avenue, hitting at the Battle Mountain High School. The parade will take place on October sixth, twenty twenty-three at twelve P M.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
A second.
Okay, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get back to school now. All right, so we'll go back to item five. Uh, review, consideration and possible action to combine parcels in approved subdivision number twenty-three-dash-oh-one filed by Stuart Nichols to combine APN zero-zero-three-dash-one-seven-one-dash-one-zero and zero-zero-three-dash-one-seven-one-dash-one-one into one-point-six acre parcel with an R-one single-family residential zoning district. This was approved by the Planning Commission on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following conditions. One, modifications be made to the map requested by the Lander County Surveyor prior to recording, and two, map to be recorded with Lander County Reporter's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioner, again. Um, so Mr. Nichols, and I think there's a partner involved. They own these two parcels in Kingston. Um, they would like to combine them to build a home on them. Um, no issues that I saw. The Planning Commission approved them at their August meeting. Um, as far as condition number one, those modifications have already been made to the map. Um, so if we want to remove that condition, we can. Um, but other than that, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Shelby. Are there any questions? Public have any comment or questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion if we approve the request to combine parcels in approved subdivision number twenty-three-dash-oh-one filed by Stuart Nichols. Combine APNs, oh, oh, three, dash, one-seven-one, dash, one-oh, and oh, oh, three, dash, one-seven-one, dash, eleven, into one, zero-point-six-one acre parcel within an R-I, single-family residential zoning district. And this was approved by the Planning, Planning Commission on August sixteen, twenty twenty-three. The following conditions. One, modification had to be made to the map requested by the Lander County Surveyor prior to rec, recording. Two, map to be reported with the Lander County Reporter's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so we have a motion. And we have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we go to six. Review, consideration and possible action on zone change number twenty-three-dash-oh-one filed by Rebecca and Jeffrey Levitt to change the zoning of APN zero-one-one-dash-two-three-oh-dash-oh-eight and zero-one-one-dash-two-three-oh-dash-zero-nine from M Industrial to A-two, five-acre agricultural district to all, for continued residential use and expansion of residential use. This was approved by the Planning Commission on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three with no additional conditions.
Um, so, uh, Ms. Levitt is here if she has anything to add, but, um, they want, are wanting to build a shop on their property, and currently it's zoned industrial, so that's not allowed. So, uh, we recommended that they change the zoning to A-two. Um, so that is what they did. The commi, the Planning Commission approved it at their meeting, uh, with no conditions.
Okay, I make a motion to change the zone, uh, for the zone change, um, two-three-dash-zero-one filed by Rebecca and Jeffrey Levitt, uh, to change the zone APN, uh, APNs to be zero-one-one-dash-two-three-zero-dash-zero-eight. Um, and zero-one-one-dash-two-three-zero-dash-zero-nine from M Industrial to A-two, five-acre agricultural district to all for continued residential use and expansion of residential use. This was approved by the Planning.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion. I've got a question. So, so where exactly is this?
Um, it's off of Washington Avenue, George Washington Avenue.
Which is exactly where?
It's over by the airport.
Okay, so, so my, my question, as I'm sure the Planning Commission has already thought this through, but if it was, I mean, we're going from industrial to ag is, it's not a spot zoning thing, is it? I mean, if we're in an industrial area and then we're asking to change it to an ag?
Your concern is justified in that, that can happen and that is often a problem. But in that particular area, because it's close to the airport, we have both, you know, the hope was that there would be more industrial development out that way. I think you remember back when we had a lot of hopes for that, and maybe it'll still happen, but it hasn't happened yet. And the area, it, around it is agricultural, and this will tie in with the agricultural area, so it would not be spot zoning. Spot zoning is more when you put something and it was completely surrounded by something else. But when you're just moving the border a little, which is all you're doing here, it doesn't hurt it.
Okay, thank you. And did we have public comment?
Um, well, I got a concern cause I didn't know.
Go ahead and come up to, yeah, and just state your name for the record, please.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Um, Aurora Campbell, and I live on Frontage Road, and there, this property is right directly behind me. Um, my concern was if it's gonna change anything on my property. And, um, cause when we bought, everybody bought that property, they knew it was zoned M. And now it's wanting to be changed. And we came probably about ten years ago for the same issue in front of the commissioners when they were still at the old courthouse. And, um, but now everybody that's there has passed away, so. But I, I'm concerned. I did not want it and I protested, but, um, anyway, the Planning Commission approved it. And, and as long as it doesn't affect my land, I'm okay.
Well, I, I wouldn't think it does because your parcel is your parcel, their parcel is their parcel. And that was my question to the, to make sure that what they were doing was.
That's what I was concerned about. If, you know, right behind me, I'm commercial, and then right behind me is gonna be agricultural, and, and that was brought up last time, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your comment.
So it won't change the zoning on mine. Okay, that's all I was concerned.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into item seven. Review, consideration and possible action on zone change number twenty-three-dash-oh-two filed by Lander County on behalf of NNN Retail Development to change the zoning of APN zero-zero-two-dash-two-hundred-dash-sixty-seven from C-two to general commercial and R-one, single-family residential to C-one, commercial district, to allow for the development of a retail establishment. This was approved by the Planning Commission on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three with no additional conditions. This was approved by the planning commission on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with no additional conditions. So where is this at exactly?
Um, so this is the vacant parcel right next to Midway and behind the liquor store. Um, so there is a proposed Dollar General to be going here. Um, currently, the parcel has dual zoning. Um, a section is zoned R one and a s- small section is zoned, uh, C two. Uh, so, and that was found to be an error on the county's behalf somewhere way back when. Um, so this is kind of just cleaning up the zoning to allow for that, uh, new development.
Okay, are there any questions? Just, yes?
Quick, in terms of, this is similar as before. If you look at the map, you'll see that the C two, both C two and R one are together. Again, you're just shifting the, the boundary lines more or less of where the zoning goes.
Jared, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah. Uh, this is between the Midway and the, uh, State Dunker, okay, right here.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I'd been told it was going to be on the other side of the map, map.
Oh, no.
Okay, is, uh, public have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the zone change number two three dash oh two filed by Lander County on behalf of N N N Retail Development to change the zoning on A P N zero zero two dash, two, zero, zero, dash, six, seven from C two to general commercial and R one, single-family residential to C I, commercial district to allow for the development of a retail establishment. This was approved by the planning commission on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with no additional conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Shelby. Okay, we'll move to item eight. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the natural resource officer's job description. So basically, this is the person that we're hiring, that we've discussed about hiring in the county to help us with, uh, resource issues, water, et cetera. Um, and we're just approving what they've laid out as the job description. So are there any questions about that? Hey, the public have any questions, come to the front, please.
I guess I'm a bit behind the eight ball here, but can we, uh, can we have that job description read?
Well, we can provide you a copy of it.
Or provide us a copy of it.
Yeah, it's, uh.
It's rather all.
Can we get Mr. Neber for a copy, so we have it?
I, I, I feel it's very important that we, we do something like this because in the past, we've had other agencies that tried to represent our values. And other agencies from other states do not represent our values in the way they, they need to be. And I'm a very strong proponent of hiring somebody that represents Lander County as Lander County.
Okay, so just so you know, this, this person will become, if I'm not mistaken, it's a, it's an actual Lander County job position, so it's not an agency we're hiring.
Right.
And I can, let me read you some of the examples of the duties that we have. Oh, you got a copy over there? Okay, good.
You can have one copy.
But your concerns are noted.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, no questions? Any more public, uh, questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the natural resource officer job description.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll, uh, have a fifteen minute break here. Mr. Sparks, when we.
When we come back, can we get to items nine and eleven? Because I believe that Brandy has to get back over there by ten thirty, so.
Okay, we'll make it a ten minute break and then we'll be right back. Sorry.
Unmuted. This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll move to nu- uh, item nine. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the nurse practitioner's job description. Morning, Brandy.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Thanks, Brandy Bingo, for the record.
Does the commission have any questions on the job description?
No.
Okay. Brandy, you have any input on it?
I don't, I looked fine when Liz sent it over.
The public have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the nurse practitioner job description.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we're gonna skip ten, we'll jump to eleven. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the interval contract between the state of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, D P B H, Community Health Service Program and Lander County.
Brian, will you ask and see if there's anybody on for this? Um, I thought somebody was going to be present. We did have a meeting regarding this. They did say they would have a representative here. Um, I know Bert had a couple of questions because we asked for a few things. Dr. Ross actually asked for, um, documents to prove what exactly they have been doing and I thought we were going to get an updated agreement and we have not received that.
Okay, is there anybody on the phone, uh, for item eleven?
Hi, yes, good morning, my name is Brisa Virgin. I apologize, I actually, um, came out to Austin, so I'm sitting here at the courthouse with Michelle in Austin, not realizing that the in-person meeting was in, uh, Baton Rouge.
Missed the mark just by a little bit. Okay, so I think we've kind of been bouncing back and forth on this one for a while. There were some questions on whether the scope of work was being met, uh, per contract. I had some issues with if they, uh, filled for like federal grant money and then how does it strap land the county? There were just some questions based around this, so, uh, where is, we're done. Do you have some questions to you on it or questions?
Well, that, he's out there talking, but he did, he wanted a copy of the same thing that Dr. Ross asked for.
Okay.
Um, to provide us with proof and records of what.
We don't have an updated.
I haven't gotten anything or an updated rec.
So, do you have a response, uh, to that?
Yes, so, um, Brandy, um, are we referencing to what community health services? Um, what services we may have provided or the E P E component?
So, um, I think you guys sent over an email as far as the E P E that had been conducted. Um, Dr. Ross did ask for the community health nursing portion of it. Um, they sent over the job qualifications of the environmental and so I think he wanted an actual kind of overview of all of the services that have been provided over the last few years. Because on one of these pages, it says that that will be provided regularly, invoice and updates, the one point eight. And so I think he was just asking more of, um, for those to be provided.
Yeah, thank you, um, this is Brisa again for the record. Um, so, yes, I can definitely spend it and write it when I can get back, Brandy. I do have just a quick synopsis if you would like that.
Okay. So when we met with them on Monday, they basically said, like, we can start transitioning out of this contract, but it takes an extended period of time, probably up to a year. And so we can start working towards that. They were going to look at the services that they haven't provide, been providing, like the community health services that I'm providing and maybe step that back a little bit and come back with an updated contract. Is what I got on Monday.
That's what I got.
Why would it, why would it require, I mean, why would it require a year to get out of the contract? I mean, I thought it, I thought I seen in there where it was a, you could get out.
It has to go, Brisa, can you provide more clarification on that and how, getting, where the contract has to go to step out of it?
Yes, absolutely, so, so this is Brisa again for the record. Um, so, uh, the contract, these statements are, um, currently, um, under N R S and if we, if, look at the N R S, it actually, um, and that's N R S four, four, one, A. So within the N R S, it actually, um, states that you must, that the county could seek approval through the governor and then it must go through the interim finance committee and that's the process that would take a little while.
Okay.
Is that the exemption? Is that what she's talking about, the exemption?
Oh, the exemption.
Yeah.
Because the contract itself, we have a thirty day pause in it.
Yeah, so there's the statute that says that we have to ask for an exemption and that's what she's talking about. We have to go through the governor's office to do it.
And you do have certain things in here, um, and I can provide, I sent it over to Bert, I think, or he might have been in that email too. Um, like epidemiology, we just have to look into how they're managing that. But as far as like the food establishment stuff, I think, and then environmental, is that what it was? That looked like it actually has its own job description and qualifications and things like that that you guys should get with Dr. Ross and overview that and make sure that it's something we can totally take on before we remove the whole thing.
Right, exactly. Okay, so at this point, then, we, do we, where do we go from there?
Well, I think we wanted the records and the reports and we wanted an updated agreement, so.
We'll get that and then maybe, uh, is Dr. Ross on the phone with us today?
I doubt it.
No.
Okay, so maybe we'll get all that, we'll agenda it for a future item and then we'll make sure Mr. Ross is on the phone or here in person would be preferable. And then we can hash this out. Sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Does that work for you guys too, Brisa?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandy. Okay, we'll jump back to item ten. For discussion of possible action regarding the Lander County Commissioners Meeting scheduled for the months of November and December twenty twenty-three to continue as scheduled, cancel or change, meeting dates are November ninth and twenty-third and December fourteenth and twenty-eighth. So holiday time, so we're looking at that.
I don't think you can do it on the twenty-third, you might be one, Mr. Brown, by the way.
Yeah.
Legally, that is a holiday and I don't think it's, it's my, I don't think it's a holiday.
So, um, let's see here.
I know Patty had some input, but I don't know, I, I'm not sure her status, um, if she'll be even back by the holidays.
So we could, um, we could just have the one meeting in November.
Yep.
And then, um, December twenty-eighth. Twenty-eighth might be a tough one for me to make, just because I'm usually gone that week. Fourteenth is not an issue.
Do you want to just cancel the twenty-third and the twenty-eighth?
Just one per month?
As long as we do the same, is that we ratify the bill.
Yep.
So would you guys be op- open to that?
I'm open, Brandy, whatever you guys need.
We'll have the November ninth meeting, um, and then we'll cancel the twenty-third, which I think Bill's pointed out, we legally can't have it that day anyway. And then on December, we'll keep the fourteenth and then cancel the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So if that's okay for everybody, I'll hear a motion on that.
I'll make a motion at least April, but, um, for November and December twenty-third for the holiday to continue, um, the dates for November ninth and we won't have one on the twenty-third and December fourteenth and not, and cancel the one on the twenty-eighth and to make sure that the bills still get ratified.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll move to item twelve. Discussion of possible action to reallocate budgeted funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, oh, two, nine, dash, zero, 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 five, four, oh, one, zero, project number F A two four, dash, one, two, seventy-three thousand dollars to the following projects. Proposed expenditures, project zero, two, nine, dash, zero, 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 dash, five, one, zero, one, zero, F A two four, dash, five, four, ten thousand dollars, project zero, two, nine, dash, zero, 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 dash, five, one, zero, one, zero, F A two four, oh, seven, twenty-five thousand, and new project, ten thermal imaging monocular units with protective cases, twenty-six thousand, six hundred, totaling a reallocation of current budgeted funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand, one hundred. So we're moving, uh, Lincoln's not here today. So we're just moving money around in the budget funds, right?
Correct. I think you've got your sonerys in front of you.
Yeah.
This is Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office. So this, the original project was budgeted, uh, for an upgrade to a, a simulator that we currently have. However, based on, uh, that was based on us putting it in the new building, our new fire building that was going to be built with a training facility. Unfortunately, that will not be built in time for us to be able to do this. And, uh, speaking to the manufacturer, we won't be able to get the upgrade in the future just because of the age of the equipment and so forth. So the, the money would have to drop off, uh, at the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then, so we've asked to reallocate some of the funds out of that budget and money. I did speak to Lincoln and she said that's not an issue. We would still keep it in the same project number, we would just, uh, code it out from there.
So the, because you didn't, you didn't originally ask for the, uh, night visioning or the thermal imaging, sorry, in the budget, right?
Thermal imaging, correct. Um, it was a request by our staff and, um, that was a mistake on my part for not adding it into the budget.
Got you. Okay, are there any questions? Commissioners, public have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reallocate budgeted funds F Y twenty twenty-three, dash, twenty twenty-four, oh, two, nine, dash, zero, 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 five, four, zero, one, zero, project F A twenty-four, dash, twelve, seventy-three thousand to the following projects. Proposed expenditures, project zero, two, nine, dash, zero, 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 dash, five, one, zero, one, and F A twenty-four, twenty-five, ten thousand, project zero, two, nine, zero, 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 uh, five, one, zero, one, zero, F A twenty-four, dash, oh, seven, twenty-five thousand, five hundred, and new project, dash, ten thermal imaging monocular units with protective cases, twenty-six thousand dollars, totaling a reallocation of current budget funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item thirteen. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the temporary road closure for the high school homecoming.
We already did that one.
Oh, sorry, we did. We'll move to fourteen. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove allowing Lander County retiree employees purchase health insurance at their own cost up to age sixty-five compliant with N R S two eight seven, point oh, two, three, and to add any county stipulations if requested.
And albeit staying from any conversation.
Yeah, so we've, uh, we've talked about this, I think, at a couple of meetings and, uh, we've asked, uh, Tim Holland to be here, he's here today. Um, so to bring everybody up to speed, there's, so people that have retired, where they're looking, we're looking at the option of giving them the opportunity to be able to purchase insurance. They front that cost, so it's not a burden to the taxpayer. But then there were also concerns that, uh, because of the added, uh, load to staff, what it could do to our premiums, that we had looked at the idea of possibly, uh, creating a, um, yeah, like an administrated fee to cover that, just to where there is no burden to the system, to taxpayers. And then there was also some discussions, Mr. Quick pointed out, that, uh, looking at possibly self-insuring ourselves. Um, so that's what we're here to discuss today. So, Tim, you want to come up front? So you kind of heard the nutshell of what we're looking at and some, my questions are based around those points. Like, number one is, is self-insuring, is that something that, is it a doable thing? What are some things that we should be considering about that? So we can start with that.
Um, I understand that when you self-insure, claims are covered for the first year and then you might have things like lasers put on them. I would have you look back maybe a couple of years ago when Sparks had a two million dollar double lung transplant. Laser put on, that means the first two million dollars comes directly out of the Lander County's pocket for that claim. You can consult Russell Klein over the, um, Lander County School District right now and their self-insured plan with how, how many employees they have and they're about six hundred thousand dollars over budget right now. I think self-insuring a group of your size is a horrible idea.
And when you say our size, too small?
Yes. Yep. Self-insuring is a, it's a, there's, there's level funded, there's a lot of different ideas behind it. But I've always said that your plan is running incredibly. You're one of maybe three percent of Northern Nevada still has a five hundred dollar deductible plan. Um, you've used it as a recruitment tool in an excellent way. And it's running well and you've got a great carrier. I wouldn't mess with any of that stuff right now.
Okay, well, we'll jump to the next question then, is, as far as giving retirees. Okay, we'll, we'll jump to the next question then, is, as far as giving retirees the opportunity to purchase their insurance and putting in an administrative fee or something to, because the whole point was like, I think the, the biggest concern about this was that it's going to put a, a load on taxpayers, right? So, our way of thinking outside of the box is like, we take that load away. If the, if the person who, the retiree wants to pay for exactly the load or the tax that they're putting on the system, we should allow that. And so, let's discuss that. What are your thoughts on that?
The N R S two eight seven zero two three is, there's about, I don't know what the exact number is of how many people are in pool packed, but almost every single one of them view this law differently, and how it's utilized. When it comes down to my portion of this, the premium paid into the plan is just the premium that Anthem is going to come up with is the rate. It's the utilization of the person on the plan that will make the difference. So, if you put low utilizers on the plan, and they're the ones that enroll, you're going to have great renewals, great things moving forward. If the people on the plan are very, very high utilizers, then you're going to have higher rates in the future. So, it's not based on how many retirees are on there, it's the utilization of what they use.
Okay, so, because that was the question, is that if we're taking retirees, we're taking people who are on the older spectrum, and they had the chance of increasing premiums. But then, we said, okay, well, if that's the case, how, how could we figure out like, what would be a fair assessment fee to put on in addition to them paying for it? How, how could we go about figuring something out like that? Because that's the thing too, that the other thing we discussed was that we're only going to allow them to stay on the system until, what, age sixty-five?
Medicare eligible.
Until Medicare kicked in, yeah, so, because that's the thing, is, is if we could, if there's a doable way that we could look at, okay, this person's coming on, this is what their insurance costs, their age is this, we're going to assess a, a five percent fee in addition to that for what they could potentially do to the premiums, to the group. And that, that was my idea, that is, if, if, if we offered that to just Lander County employees, because the more you have, the better it is, because more of them are paying, it's, right, you're, you're paying into the system, it's, it's, you know, it's insurance. It's like they're paying, and the chances of everybody using it's not, you know what I'm saying?
Right. The maximum you can charge is two percent over current.
Two percent is the maximum you can charge?
Yes. And Commissioner, we talked about this earlier, if you have three retirees on there, two retirees, it's not really going to matter. If you have a hundred and twenty employees and you have ninety retirees on there, then it, it just makes an underwriter cough a little bit. But it will come down to the end as utilization reports, is how much premium came in and how much was used. You're also going to open up a little bit of a can of worms on this, because you also have something called N R S two eight seven zero two zero five, and that allows retirees on even numbered years in January to come back onto your plan. And it is, why would they come back on your plan? Because you have an amazing plan.
Right, so that was the other discussion, part of it was to, again, it's like, it's, what sets Lander County apart from other counties, from other industries within our county to secure and maintain and hold quality employees? And insurance is a big thing. So, that was another, that was another thing that we were looking at. So, so by statute, we're allowed, we can't charge more than two percent. And the other one is that you're saying every even year, if somebody's a retiree of the county, they can come back and say, hey, I want to get on the.
Yep, they could be in Florida, Alaska, Alabama, Europe. They can contact Human Resources and apply to come back on the plan.
Now, could we, because we had discussed on setting like, a years, like a parameter of years that they worked for the county, it's like, so, let's say we set it at ten years, somebody that worked five years, could that person come back if we put that stipulation, or is that stipulation not allowed per that N R S?
I'd probably want to work with the district attorney to give you the perfect answer on that one. But generally, it is, when someone leaves at five years, they're generally going into another purse program, from my experience, or they're going into another industry. It's usually a full retirement.
Okay. So, that's kind of what it is, guys. We're here to discuss it. Any questions, comments? I'll start with the Commissioner first here. Nothing?
So, could we put like a stipulation of, you could go out to, you have to be, it's counting twenty years in order to be part of the plan, or would that fall under this N R S to say, no, it has to be one of them?
Nothing's in place right now, so I think you could absolutely do that.
Is there any comment or questions from the public? Discussion on it?
I have, I have a question. Nolena Castle on?
Yeah, Nolena.
What's, do we even have an idea of what the price would be for an employee?
Well, I think, so basically, the, the set fee and Liz could probably.
So, it's.
They were, they're going to basically pay what we're paying for the premiums right now. So, if it's, well, it just depends on what plan they were on, whether it's the P P O or the H S A. They're going to pay that premium, and then they're talking about tacking on a two percent on top of that.
Addition two percent on top of it.
Okay.
So, if you, does it have to carry to the plan, or could it be moved to the H S A, which is a little bit different in deductibles and coverage and so, and so forth?
They would have to be offered both plans, but the county would no longer contribute to the H S A.
Any other questions? Does somebody else have a question over here? I did. Is, is, so it's strictly based off of utilization, not off of number of employees or, or past employees that are on the plan? Is that, is my understanding of that correct?
Right now, it'll be based on utilization. If you have a lot of retirees on there, then it'll become a demographic question of where do they live and how old are they? Absolutely, because Anthem has a very broad reach, but when you, the younger the census you have, generally, the lower the utilization, the older the census, higher users. And I will say back to the self-insured question as well, prescriptions are your number one item, which I've talked to you about many times. Those have jumped from eight percent of a plan to thirty, thirty-two percent of a plan. And so, the prescriptions that are in place will be the, the largest driver of that utilization.
Brian, I have a.
Yes, Denise.
Denise Fortune for the record. So, it, it can be done. I guess my question is, is it something that you guys are going to continue to look into and could be a possibility? Or, I mean, where, where are we at on this right now?
Well, no, that's, we're, that's what we're definitely looking at, is, it's like, I think it's a great idea. The only hesitancy I have is, is not knowing what the utilization, utilization is going to become. But if I'm thinking correctly, I just, I can't, I just, even if you don't have these people, you still, I mean, you're bringing on people that are going to be a little bit older in age, and that's the risk, right?
Well, they're not going to.
They need more prescription drugs, you know.
They're not going to be over sixty-five.
Right, exactly.
So, no offense, I don't think that's like getting on any.
Well, it's too much.
No offense, but.
Well, I want to tell you, seventy-three percent of the cost on a medical plan is lifestyle choice.
What'd you say?
About seventy-three percent of the cost of utilization on the plan is lifestyle choice.
Lifestyle choice, right.
Lifestyle choice. Then you have, I've already taken, I've just seen some different things going on, but it's, it's just a bit of risk.
Could you, could we adopt like exclusions to like, if somebody's a smoker, you don't accept them, you can't do that?
The other thing, I'll put this, if, if you do vote on this, it's not going to happen overnight. We have to get Anthem to allow, we might have to wait till the next renewal, we might, I mean, that's a, right now, they understand and why the rates, and I just want to be transparent about this. The reason why the rates are where they are is they, they know that there are no retirees on the plan. So, that, that could become an issue on the next, next of future renewals, when we start adding that.
So, that was my question. We would have to get them to approve this first. They would, Anthems would have to accept it?
They're not going to say no.
Okay. My other question is, is the individuals that they're retiring, I would, I would ask that if you do do this and you go forward with it, that they understand that we would go through PERS and ask PERS to pull the deduction first.
Yes, so we're not having.
Correct.
Exactly, so we're not strapped with that burden.
I will have to apply to PERS, PERS says they can deny it, but I will have to apply to PERS for every individual and ask them to pull their deduction.
And I agree with that. I just had this conversation with Nolena the other day, because some of us have already put money up, I'm, I am close to retirement, and I have money put up to pay for my health insurance benefits, but not everybody has that. And it's not fair to the county to have to go after people and go, hey, you owe us a thousand dollars, it's the fifth of the month for the insurance. So, I understand the reason to take it out of the PERS, which, which is a great idea. But I also think, as you said, Tim, there's not going to be a lot. I mean, if you guys put a cap on this, um, twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years, whatever you guys do, um, you don't have a lot. There's a handful of us right now, and yeah, there'll be more and more, hopefully, hopefully, but it's not ever going to be a huge amount of people.
What do you, what do you think about the age on it? Because, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is if these people want to be part of this system, they're willing to pay it, and the additional two percent, the more, the better.
Right.
Because you're taking, if you say ten years, you're taking younger people, the risk of them being deathly ill or having some major problems, not as great as the people that have been there twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and they're still willing to pay that two percent.
Come on, Tim, help, help us all people out.
And then, Tim, while you're thinking with that, my next one was, is there any way you could give us some projected models? You could go back to the, the underwriters and just say, hey, look, we're going to, they could potentially have a hundred people, two hundred people, whatever the numbers is, to, to bring back to say, this is what it could potentially do to the premiums. So, we have that number we could think with.
Absolutely, I can do predictive modeling like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but I do want to tell you, more people on the plan doesn't mean lower utilization. It means more money. But a lot of times, why, why would somebody pay this rate to be on the plan? It's because they're.
Because it's insurance.
Security, they're.
Why do you insure your vehicle?
Yeah.
When it's, when it's paid for, you know, full coverage, there's a lot of people that still pay it. Why? It's just in case something happens.
Yep.
And, Tim, I have a question. So, if this is something that they do approve, is this something we would have to wait for open enrollment? Or is this something we could modify the contract we have with Anthems now?
Uh, the, the pricing right now is based on no retirees in the plan, so Anthem does reserve the right, if there's a ten percent or more demographic change, they have the, they reserve the right to re.
We can modify the agreement we have now.
Yeah.
Sorry, and just one more thing, Brian. I just wanted to say for the record, I, I don't know if, if this does go forward and you guys do put the, the number of years on there. Um, I think it should be as low as twenty, maybe start out at twenty. I mean, if you guys go below or whatever, but I think it should be twenty for the simple fact of the Lander County Sheriff's Office. I believe that a lot of them, because they are a police and fire, they don't have to put in the thirty years we all do. And I think they should be, and, and I could be wrong on this, things could have changed, but I, I think this should be a benefit for the people at the Sheriff's Office too, that, whose retirement is under a different number of years than those of us within this part of the county. So, just something to keep in mind when you guys are looking at the years.
I have some other questions. So, um, so when you're dealing with employees in PERS, how would it, how would this, would this, with volunteer firemen? You know, some that have been in there a very long time.
I honestly say, if you do this, you, you only apply it to full-time county employees.
Full-time county employees.
Because our volunteer fires right now do not get our insurance.
They don't hit your insurance?
They don't get the benefits. They only get PERS.
Okay, got you. That's good to know.
And Commissioner, you wouldn't be able to take somebody that's not on the plan and offer them retiree coverage?
Okay, good.
Wait, what was that?
You wouldn't really be able to take somebody who's not currently on the plan and offer them.
But we could offer it to the employees that were on the plan previously, even, and they've already retired.
Yes.
Right, so if they're previously, they could come back every even year to say, hey, I want back on the plan?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
I have a question. So, when you guys are talking, I understand Liz's thing, Denise's thing, the years of service. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to show you on for the record. I understand the years of service, and you said full-time employees. What about elected officials? They might come in at age thirty-five, do two terms of something, retire at forty-five and want the insurance. So, I, I get that you don't add the fire department people, because they're volunteers on a different side of PERS, but aren't elected officials? And you don't have to tell me for sure, but don't you guys get county insurance?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm thinking Commissioners, elected officials.
I consider elected officials full-time employees.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That was my question.
And you're firm, so that, why do you have to have a stated exception, do you think?
No, exactly, because of term limits. Okay, so I had one other question, I forgot what it was. Robert, did you have something to say?
I do. Robert Quick, I have a question for Tim and then a comment. If the, if the county does decide to do this and then decides this is not cost-effective, can they reverse it?
Yes, that was my question. Thank you.
Couldn't we add that stipulation?
Uh, not in my world, that's, that's, because you're, you're giving, you're going to give something, you're going to take it away.
So, what is, this is.
Not, not take it away from those who have it, but not offer it any longer.
Oh, grandfather those that are on the plan and just not offer anymore? Oh, boy.
Because you start talking about taking it away, that's a whole different ball.
I'm fairly certain that you can stop people who aren't already taking it, that is, at any time, you can stop that, that is, you can get out from under it. You just can't take benefits away from people.
Okay, so if we, we look and we're like, holy crap, the utilization, wow, that's not, that's not good. Acts it, it stops at that point, but you still have the people that are on your system on the system, which probably added to the utilization.
Only till they're sixty-five, though. And then, only till they're sixty-five, then you don't have it anymore. So, you take the hit for a period, but you know that this is your cutoff date for that hit. So, that was my one question. My, my second, or my opinion is, I absolutely think we need to utilize this as a benefit to long-term employees of the county, and you need to stipulate a number of years, whether that be, and the judge is correct, it's a twenty-year retirement. Depending on when you enter police and fire PERS, it's twenty years. But I think it should be a minimum, in my opinion, fifteen or twenty, as a benefit of the county long-term employee. That will reduce the number of people you have in this plan, just.
Substantially, yep.
Well, for your selfish reasons, you may want to make it twelve years approximately, because three terms as a county commissioner, and you're term limited, so.
Well, that's what Mike was talking about, was elected officials and term limits, how does it affect those?
Yeah, so.
We have you all set up as classes on the health plan, so we might want to look into, can you have levels of classes of, you know, elected officials is one, sheriffs is another, rank and file, whatever you want to say, we can, I think you can decipher that a little bit differently as far as who qualifies for it. I do want to say one thing though, I think it's important to know where you were, where you are, and where you're going. Where you were was you had high deductibles, employee-only coverage, you'd pay seventy thousand dollars to train a sheriff, they'd bounce to the mine, and you had this repetitive cycle of that. Then you move to family coverage, and completely reversed everything, brought in Anthem, have you of you. Now, you don't lose anybody, and now the mine's insurance is absolutely horrible. It's a seven thousand dollar H S A. It used to be incredible. You don't have that problem anymore. So, where you're going is probably where this conversation is.
Okay, so maybe we can get some projected models. Oh, sorry, yes.
No problem. Jason Blake for the record. I don't have a dog in this bite, but just some thoughts, if I was in your shoes, this is, these are some questions I would be wanting to hear. And you alluded a little bit to it, is Lander County the only county that's pursuing something like this, or that has done something like this? Or are there other places, other states, that are doing something like this, and what's their experience? Have they?
I know I reached out to surrounding counties, they are not offering it. Just our surrounding counties about around us. Tim can answer to anybody else, but our surrounding counties are not offering it.
I think that would be helpful information, if there was some other entity that was doing something similar. The other thing, maybe, Tim, you could answer this in a report to him later, is maybe some, maybe the top ten most expensive utilizers or issues that cancer, pregnancy. most expensive utilizers or issues that cancer, pregnancy gone wrong, um, lung transplants is, was brought up. Maybe the top ten, and then you can kind of assess your risk, um, in your own pool, as you kinda look at your pool, as to those top ten risks. Just some thoughts.
Okay, thank you, good. So, yeah, so if we could maybe get some projected, um, utilization numbers, I guess you'd say, or. What else would we tend to look at?
Could, could we look at what it would be for the, I don't know, Tim does all the negotiating for our insurance, but that may be something else that, that maybe, and I know that that's hard to predict what that would be, but if there are other counties that are doing this, kind of what it changed from when they were getting their previous to when they went to it. I don't.
Uh, we can, we can look at that. It's, it's very tough to, um, when you take somebody in the south that's, uh, Nye County or Clark County, Lincoln, where they have, you know, twenty-two hospitals and there's care everywhere, versus somewhere here where somebody sneezes and they fire up a helicopter and you go to you, you, you of you. Um, versus Rena Sparks mineral story, um, they're all very close to care. And so the helicopters don't start up that often unless you're in foul and now with that, um, ban of Churchill there. So those predictive models are very tough. With Jase was talking about what prescriptions are in place, and, uh, you can't predict an emergency. You can't predict, um, you know, a, a baby in NICU. Impossible. It happens, yes, all the time. But what we can predict is prescription costs and current conditions we have in place. You just, not gonna be able to tell who they are, we can just say, this is in place.
All right, is there anything else that we would like to maybe have brought back for, uh, future discussion on this item? Anything that, more so than ever asking? Okay.
I guess if there's some data on some counties that do this somewhere, you know, what's, if, if there's been an increase, if they've had to increase premiums, hard deductibles and that to, to, to keep the cost reasonable, because like you said, it is a marketing to, it's a strong marketing tool. The insurance is phenomenal to say, hey, you spent twenty years with us and we got that. So if, if there's possibly some, some data out there to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Support that.
I mean, just, uh, what I will bring is, you know, Elko County School District, they have a thousand retirees on their plan. Nobody will touch them. They got what they got. Uh, Washoe County School District, you have seven thousand people on the plan with, um, fifty percent of them being retirees. Impossible to shop in a lot of ways, and, and, um, the, it's so.
It's impossible to shop?
In some areas, because when you have like a double lung transplant, nobody's gonna touch you. It's just, let's let that work its way through and then we'll, we'll market you next year. And it's gotten to the point where even with Washoe County School District, you know, they might have Anthem with an HMO, they might have Hometown Health with a PPO, and they might have Aetna covering their prescription costs. So they're really have had to get really creative with, um, with the, the coverages to make it remain affordable.
Is this something that's commonly done in like the private industry? Is there any other outside of like huge corporations? Is this?
Very rare unless you're a Fortune five hundred company.
Cause I, I was just thinking, there's something else to be comparable, but we're working with the, the people. And this is a public comment from my personal perspective, not from, I mean, we're working with the taxpayers' dollars and we're pretty blessed in the jobs that we have. We get up every day and go to the same place, go home every night, like, not everybody gets that. We don't get mandatory, we don't get, a lot of these things are very seldom, do we? And, and sometimes I think that, you know, being greedy maybe, and, and I use that word very loosely because it probably feels unfair for those who have put as many years in as they have. Myself, I would, I would be one that would probably be benefiting from this as well, so I just want that to be known. Um, but seems, seems like it may be damaging to the, to the younger crowd that's coming in. Um, and if it's not something that's practiced in, in the public sector, um, you know, probably shouldn't be done, if it's not done in the private, it should be done in the public, is what I was trying to say. So I, I don't know, they're just my thoughts from, from the cuff, and I don't mean any disrespect, that's probably why a lot of times I'm disliked, but I don't mean any disrespect to, uh, to those of you who have put in all the years, because we, we love you and we appreciate the service, but it's just considerations, right?
I also wanna, I just wanna add something. Um, I don't want it to affect the, if we do do this and it causes our premiums to go irate, I want to make sure that it, it hopefully doesn't affect the plans that we offer to the employees right now. Cause right now, we do offer them to have their family coverage. And if those premiums go up, then that's a more cost to us, and I would hope the board wouldn't try to take that away from them.
Right. And, um, it's just not employed. It's spouses too. I mean.
Yeah.
You can, you can count, you know, count that twice if, if need be.
Okay, well, it's definitely some food for thought, if we can get some, maybe some more numbers where we can think of that.
Mm-hmm. And, and one other thing, Commissioner, um, I, I've come across this a lot, come across this a lot lately, and that is, you might have a sixty-five-year-old male with a fifty-year-old spouse. Something to be concerned about, cause now you're taking away her insurance because he's going on the Medicare. Just, I, I've come across it so many times lately where somebody is remaining on, remaining not only employed or on the employer-sponsored plan until their spouse is also Medicare eligible.
So, Tim, are you saying that if we offer this to the retired employees, we have to offer it to their whole family too?
Well, you're not gonna have dependents on it usually on a retiree unless they had a child very, very late in life, but yes.
I'm picturing this just the employee.
Spouse, employee, spouse, and dependents that are eligible are all eligible for that continuation.
Robert Quick for the record, can't the county dictate employees only?
No.
Insurance law or the statute probably is.
If they're, if they're currently on the plan, they're generally offered that.
And what's the age of insurance for like dependents, like children and that now, twenty-six?
It's.
Twenty-six, isn't it?
Twenty-six.
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 It's, they, they lose coverage in the last day of the month in which they turn twenty-six unless they're, they're disabled.
Do you have an older employee in their fifties or that, that would happen?
And then. Uh, Robert Quick, for, the last thing, not to give Liz more work, but more work. Can Liz pull up the records and kinda estimate on the number of employees that would be eligible for this, if you set it at a certain number of years, fifteen or twenty, and give you an idea of the number of employees?
Yeah.
Right, and again, I don't think everybody's gonna jump on board just because it's not cheap. Those premiums are not cheap. I mean, it's gonna be something, it's, yeah, you're definitely gonna wanna, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it, you know, so. Um, anyway, any more discussion?
So, Bill, on some of the questions he referred to you, could you give some of the answers for that too? So when we meet, we have some of the legal answers of, of what we can and can't do, you know, to age and years and.
Okay, I'll try and get with Tim on that.
And take it away.
Yeah.
And I think that, uh, I have an estimation of what, you know, what we're looking at for numbers would be definitely a strength.
Yeah, we're just trying to assess the burden.
Yep.
That's the point, so we don't want the burden to be that on taxpayers.
I would, I would imagine if the burden becomes great, you probably take away dependent coverage first. That would be the first move. You either raise a deductible or you're gonna go back to an employee-only scenario.
Okay, so, no more? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Tim, for coming and answering questions. Uh, we'll move to item fifteen, correspondence reports, future agenda items. Yes. Okay, um, we do need to, Burt's not here, I, I, it dawned on me that we should have given him his evaluation, I think it was in July, so I apologize to Burt for not having done that, and we definitely need that on our next agenda. Yes, please, uh, notice him that we are going to be doing his evaluation. As far as the method in which we do it, I'm not a stickler on that. I, I feel that as us being his bosses, we should have the right to evaluate him how we feel fit to, to. But if, if you want to suggest, or if people want suggestions to make it easier for themselves, I mean, I will.
It's up to you guys, the last evaluation, a lot of you just did a verbal. Um, Pat's is the only one that actually used the evaluation form.
Yeah.
And presented it. I think you did a verbal, I think JR did a verbal, and so did Art, so it's up to you guys. If you want the evaluation form, I can give them to you. If not, you can do, just let me know.
Okay, Bert, just so you know, I'm, I'm having your evaluation put on this next coming agenda, so they'll be noticing you of that, your evaluation.
Just keep in mind, the second meeting in September has been canceled, so the next meeting isn't until October twelfth.
Yes, so that's when we'll be having it. Um, anything else that needs going on?
Uh, could we get, make sure we get the removal of the burn ban on the next agenda?
On Hughes Energy? Yes, they will be in town later this month, so we will give.
And Kathy, were we given a request for the Frontier position to come in?
Yeah, he was going to, on, for the Frontier.
Oh, yes, yes, that's. Okay, no more on that. We'll move into public comment, uh, for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment?
So with the, I don't know, in eighteen years, I haven't seen rain like that. That phone rang off the hook on each and every rainstorm, so I wanna thank Burt and his group and, and Don, Don for the road and bridge, for everything that was addressed and, and to get out of some of the situations that were presented. Definitely for the professionalism of, because the texts were answered immediately and so on and so forth of, of concerns and issues. So thank you guys and everybody that was involved. I don't know everybody that, that kicked in, I'm sure everybody did. So thank you guys for definitely addressing something that I've never experienced here before, so I appreciate it. I know there's a lot of people that appreciated it as well.
More rounds of that were supposed to, I think was, um, and with that, you know, I think, thank God for, cause I was watching a lightning storm the other night, but it was pouring rain so hard, you, it basically put it out, but I've never seen, I, I had to put headphones on because the thunder was so bad, it was scaring me, and that's pathetic. But I've never experienced thunder and lightning storms like that or rain, so, really truly kudos to you guys because, um, I was getting feeds of the, the water, and then all of a sudden it was gone, so I knew that you guys were out doing what you were supposed to do. And that definitely tell you where your plugs are, because holy smokes, our whole yard was, um, far and all of our, um, gravel was entirely flooded. Again, I can't believe that it sinks into the ground that fast, so thank you for bringing that up. But thank you guys and all of your, you know, the staff that deal with that, cause wow.
I left Wednesday on the bike and ride, I believe, across the interstate, seen lightning strike and the fire start, and it drained so hard. It was just let go a little black cloud of smoke, it was out, so, yeah, it was interesting.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh, Wayne Nebiker for the record. As the county's appointment to the Conservation District Board, it's, it's my responsibility to report to the commissioners what's going on. And, uh, uh, anyway, we're, uh, they have submitted a request to be on the agenda for, I do believe, the next meeting, and they're gonna promote what they've done for the last five years. And they put together a portfolio that I think is, is, is very informative and factual. And also, they've been working real hard to get, get their financial, uh, business in order and presented to the county commission. I'm not sure exactly when that's gonna happen, but it's real close. And thank the county for working with them greatly. And also, I would like to request that, you know, we, we need more involvement with the Conservation District. We need thoughts, we need ideas of projects. You know, you know, maybe the county could help with some of this, uh, drainage, or maybe the Conservation District could help with some of this drainage issues in town, like going north of town and seeing all the ditches are overgrown and plugged. We need people to, to come and show up and hear what's going on. And, and, uh, you know, we, there's other boards in town that need to be there, members of the Pluette Board, members of the Mule Deer Board. We would like to encourage this because I think that that's what the Lander County Conservation District is for, is for the county. And, and we need, we need participation. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Any more public comment for non-agenda items?
I, I have one more.
Okay.
So Kathy addressed, uh, a while back, a few meetings, um, had a discussion with Bill on, uh, the, the approach or not being used to the way it was approached from the previous DA. Um, so I wanna say that was good to bring that up publicly. And I also wanna personally say thanks to Bill for, I, I, I don't know, I guess I'll word it, stepping up your game and being a little bit more direct with your response, so gives a little bit of a higher level of, of comfort. So I, I guess thanks for the, having the direct conversation, Kathy and, and Bill for, for stepping it up. I guess if that conversation needs to continue, it needs to continue, but thank you.
Okay. Any more public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody.